Okay Christine.
Okay, welcome back everybody. Could I have a motion to adjourn the executive meeting?
Bill.
Bill and a second from Tom. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, could we stand for the pledge? Tonight's my next one. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all.
As everybody can see, tonight, we are all completely remote. So we don't really have any emergency evacuation procedures, except those that you practice in your own home. We can move to the approvals.
Okay, hold on one second Christine.
Trying to find the right balance of where I can see. Oh, that's not it. Actually, maybe it is. Okay. Tell me when you're ready.
All set.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education. Wait, I have the wrong sign here. Sorry. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approved the minutes transcription from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated November 16th, 2020. Can I have a motion? Can you say your names out loud because I can't?
Motion.
Sorry, was that Tom? And a second?
Linda.
Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the minutes transcription from the special meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated November 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Kelly.
From Kelly and a second?
Xavier.
From Xavier. All in favor? Aye.
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 We have FYI budget appropriation reports for the general school lunch and special aid funds. And budget transfers. Revenue status report. And it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the October 2020 treasurer's report. Do I have a motion?
Tom.
Tom and a second?
Shell.
From Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on November 24th, 2020 and December 9th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Motion from Linda and a second from Kelly?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That moves us. Now, how do I make this bigger? That moves us to board members communications. Tom, you want to start?
Sure Christine. Tonight is going to be my last public meeting as a board trustee. My fat last official day will be January 4th, when I will no longer be a resident of the district unfortunately. I really want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to have worked with everyone on this board, as well as my past trustees that I've worked with. But I really do need to thank the man that put super and superintendent. Mr. Jim Polansky. Working with him and his administrative team, Dr. Ackerman, McCoy, and the administrative wizard behind the curtain, Joanne Miranda. It's been really all their hard work and dedication that has made my work as trustee very easy. Truly going to miss all of you, believe it or not. And I'm going to miss contributing to the Huntington community. But life goes on and you have to move on with what life's give you. So thank you again. Best to all faculty, staff, and everybody in Huntington. Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Tom. I know you said you won't. You don't want us to say a lot. Oh. She looks so sad.
You see that? You see that?
I know you warned us to be quick and quiet and short. Well, I'm always short, but not in words.
I believe it was quietly into the sunset.
Yes, I know. I didn't get you the horse, but um. I just personally wanted to say thank you to you, Tom. You were president when I came on the board and really taught me so much about how to be a leader in a way that includes everybody and um. I just found that really important. You've always been one to make sure that people are heard and that's something that's very important to me. Your dedication to this whole town, your family's dedication to this whole town is just something to be so proud of. And I know that you all are. And as I said to you, I can't imagine there not being a DeJaco Mo in Huntington and then you reminded me that there still will be, so.
We're everywhere.
Well, just the, I mean, those that know you at all and your family know how much you've been a part of the history of the town and the school district for so long. And it's just so important to all of us, as I know it's important to you. So we have a few presentations for you. We got it together really quick, but now we're not together, so I didn't have the chance to do the secret reveal like I did with Jen. But I'm going to give it to Michelle, I think, to start.
Yep. Yeah, so before I I give the big reveal, I would like to say personally, I've enjoyed working with you, although as a board trustee, it's only been a short period of time, but I've known you for many, many years. And you are probably one of a few people that I've met who are lifelong Huntingtonians, and I've learned a lot from you about the history of the Huntington School District. And I remember particularly last year when we were doing the tour of the buildings, I think I learned a few tidbits from you about the things from high school back in the day when you were there. So I thank you very much for for teaching me more about Huntington, having not been, I am not a born and bred Huntingtonian. So on to the fun stuff. Hopefully, before you leave, I will be dropping these on your front door step, but if not, I will ship them down to you. You will always be a Blue Devil, a true Blue Devil. So in that regard, we have purchased personalized Blue Devil logoed golf balls for you to bring with you as you hit the golf course down in your new, your new place of residence. And the other item is I'm a frequent Hilton Head visitor and I have a few favorite spots on the island. And so we'll be giving you a gift card from my favorite restaurant, Ombra, which is on the island, which is a fantastic Italian restaurant. And and I will, when you decide to go, you let me know and I'll let Michael, the owner, know that you're coming.
Thank you. That's very, very nice. Very nice and unnecessary. Nancy is saying woo-hoo downstairs.
Well, I think Xavier, are you done, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, I think Xavier has something to say also, I'm sure.
Yes, I do. We left you a gift at Jim's office. Yeah, I think it's something that you'll enjoy. And when you do enjoy it, I hope you think of us, our board, and our, the good times that we've had. We've had some really wonderful times sitting as board members together. We've had some very sad moments that we've, we've enjoyed as well. We've learned from it. I'll never forget the conversations that we've had, the vision that you've given me. You will sorely be missed. I absolutely agree with what everybody has said. You're a Blue Devil for life. You're a DeJaco Mo, a legend here. Service to this community. Thank you for all that you've done. And God bless you and your family and hope you come back and visit us. If not.
I will definitely be back to visit you. And I have a feeling that gift might help me forget some of the bad time.
But make the good times better.
Thank you. Much appreciated. And actually, you know that we started this journey kind of together to this point. And we have done, you know, a lot of great work together and it is a mutual respect that that I think we both have gained throughout the process that has only helped improve everything we do. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Who would like to go next? Anybody have anything else to say?
I'm going to wait for us to do it on the way out.
You're going to do it on the way out? Okay.
I'll say thank you, Tom, for everything everyone else has said, but all of your years of selfless service and and on a personal level for helping me when I was running in a new trustee. Thank you. It's been a pleasure to have known you and Nancy for so long.
Those go back a ways, huh?
Yes, it does. Back to that preschool hallway.
Well, it's really all of you that have made it easy for me to, you know, do what I do and work with you and just really make it a success for all of us. So thank, thank you guys, really, because that's really, it's, 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 what is it? The teamwork that makes the dream work. So that's really what it's been.
Okay. Kelly, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll just say thank you as well, Tom. I'm sorry I didn't get the chance to work with you longer. And now I'll have an empty table mate, but I really appreciate all of your guidance that you've given me thus far. And I wish you the best of luck and all the happiness in the world. Thank you.
Wasn't that much guidance, but I don't think you need a lot from me. Pretty sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other final thoughts on Tom or any other communications and announcements that you all have? I think we have some people in the public commentary that might, you know, continue this conversation, but.
As long as it's not anybody's whose initials are E M. Or E R, I'm sorry.
I would look through because you'll see her.
Live from New York.
Okay, so then we move on to superintendent's communications announcements.
I'll start with, I'll start with Tom. You know, nine years is a long time and I will tell you like every other board member present tonight and those, those that have been with us in the past, he decided to take the, take the plunge for the right reasons. Nine years ago was a different time in Huntington. We had a number of things on the table that needed to be addressed and Tom was an integral part of every one of them. He was a big part of our putting back full day kindergarten. He was a big part of our reestablishing Jack Abrams as a STEM magnet school. He was a big part of our upgrading curriculum in so many different areas. He was a big part of just being a champion for, for all kids. And and I've been blessed to work with board members that have had that same philosophy, but Tom is, Tom is right in there. A gentleman, a tremendous family man. Nancy and Casey get him back to a, to a degree. Nancy will want to put him back here, as I'm sure at some point very soon. A great board member, but just a spectacular human being. And it has been a true pleasure to work with him through the years. I'll miss him professionally, but I'll miss him even more so personally. You know, he, he was not always far from a pushover. He was a champion of children. He was also a champion of the taxpayer and and really made sure that we were using every penny that we spent very wisely, but did that in the context of making sure that kids got what they needed from top to bottom. I'd like to thank him. I really wasn't 100% prepared for him to leave prematurely, but timing is right for him and his family and that's what counts. And this is not, it's not goodbye. It's farewell for now, but just know that I don't care where you go. You bleed blue. This has been your hometown for decades upon decades and it will, that will never change. And we just want nothing but the best health and happiness down in, down in the Carolina area. And please make sure that you're never a stranger here.
Thank you, Joe. It's, it's, as I said, it's, it's you and your team that has made this not only easy, but a pleasure. And yeah, maybe, maybe I have a strong opinion about certain things, but I think you, you have to be fair with, with those opinions as well. And that's something that not only, you know, I know you also feel the same way about, but also project very well to all the entire district and board. So thank you. I won't be a stranger. I'll let you know that. But by the same token, I hope, hope you won't be either.
Absolutely.
That's why they call it homecoming, Tom.
Yep. And there will be, there will be a homecoming at some point, a real one. I have a number of other items on my list and some of them I'll address during items for discussion. I'll, I'll speak a little bit to the COVID updates, state and local updates with respect to micro clusters and testing, et cetera. There is still a great deal of discussion going on at this point regarding what's going to happen at the federal level to support our aid package. Obviously, we're waiting with bated breath to see what happens over the next, next two months. The governor is slated to present his executive budget on January 19th. So I expect to hear something prior to that. And there, there looks like there is legislative shift in place in New York State. So how that plays out remains to be seen. You know, we're looking at some challenges. We did just receive the tax base growth factor, a figure that we use to determine the tax levy limit, the tax cap for the subsequent budget year. Wasn't as generous as I would have liked. It's not going to help us that much. We're also looking at some cost increases in terms of TRS and ERS, teacher retirement system and employee retirement system and health insurance costs. And this comes at a time when we're still spending considerably on, on PPE and things related to the pandemic. And, you know, obviously, we're also a major focus among the administrative team here not to lose sight on, on what happens post pandemic and the types of gaps that that will exist and that have widened during this time and that will have to be closed and narrowed to a large extent once this is all over. And we can talk about the, the positive impact of some of the technological changes at that point, but right now, everybody's, everybody's pretty much had it, but we've got to keep our eyes on the prize here and attempt to continue doing the right thing in terms of, in terms of staying safe and healthy. And I'll speak to that a little bit more when we get to that item on the agenda. It was an update released on Friday regarding interscholastic athletics. It was posted on the website shortly and I did incorporate it into my Friday letter. Winter sports, low-risk sports are still slated to begin, but as of right now, basketball and wrestling have been postponed indefinitely. And it remains to be seen what's going to happen with some of the other sports. I will mention that we have been looking at and we have begun the process of starting an esports program at the high school. More to follow there, but this is something that we've been looking at for some time and it seems like an ideal time to, to move that forward. So we've got a tremendous amount of interest. It's just a matter of how we can kind of work with the volume of interest and make it a manageable endeavor and hopefully it's something we can expand over the years. I'd like to throw out congratulations, you know, despite the fact that we have not been able to do musically what we've, what we've done every year at this time of year in particular, but that has not slowed the Niskamia and Skamia honors. We have a number of students at the secondary level and a number of students at the elementary level who have been honored. We'd like to congratulate those, those young people. And I'd also like, I'd be remiss if I didn't just throw a quick thank you out to Kristen Kanzer and all of our PTA units for the volume of support that they continue to provide us as a district and to their individual buildings. They have been right with us every step of the way. And they just need to know how much we appreciate everything they do and the partnership that we have. And I'll leave it at that.
So that brings us to our first public commentary. I'll remind everybody first that the way to participate in public commentary when we're remote is to raise your electronic hands and wait to be called on. Mr. Polansky will unmute you. And then when you finish your question or comment, he will mute you. And if there's a response, it will happen while you're muted. It just works better for us that way. Please remember that public commentary is, in the first instance, is limited to the comments and questions on the items for discussion and action. You have three minutes to speak. You are only permitted to speak if you are an employee or staff, a staff member in the district, a family member in the district, a student in the district, or a community member. And please do not address personnel matters or matters with regard to individual students. This is not the appropriate forum for that. With that, I'll ask Mr. Polansky to search for raised hands.
Okay, sir.
Yes, hello. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Matthew Power and I'm on the docket for this evening to be turned.
Mr. Power, we cannot address personnel matters as I just discussed, so we can't discuss personnel matters at Board of Education meetings. Should we find out if you had something else to say or is that? So was your question regarding a personnel matter? Were you comment?
No, actually, my question is, I would like to know how the board feels about an elite.
There we go. Okay. I assume that Mr. Polansky anticipates that what the subject matter is inappropriate for the meeting.
Correct.
Are there any other raised hands?
There's a raised hand.
Hey, everyone. My name is Jen Hebert and I'm a parent in the school district. As long as there's nobody to address the items for discussion and action, I was wondering if I could speak to Tom's retirement from the board.
What? Go right ahead.
Why, thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to wish Tom and Nancy the very best in their next chapter of their life. Tom, you are going to be sorely missed here, my friend. And I just want to say, as somebody who got the pleasure and had the honor of working with you for years, that you are one of the good guys, Tom. You're smart and honorable and, and kind and compassionate and you were always prepared. This is a man who does his homework. Thank you. And frankly, Tom, you made the years that I was on the board so much more pleasurable and such a, a really satisfying and gratifying job because I felt like I was working along somebody. And as Adam always said, just as with the other board members that I served with, I always felt like we were pulling in the same direction. And so I just want to thank you for being you, Tom. You were a great teammate. If I ever have another team, I'm going to want you on my team.
Awesome. Definitely cool.
All right. And please give Nancy a big hug for me. I wish you guys the best. Stay in touch.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you for everything you've done.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other?
Emily has her hand up on the screen.
I.
I sent Jim a message if you could look at his phone.
Okay, I think I got him.
Am I good?
You are good.
Live from New York.
Live from New York. Hi, everybody. I miss Emily a little bit. I miss board meetings, though. So first of all, I also want to just, I mean, it's kind of funny. Kim Brown moves down to North Carolina. You moving down to South Carolina? What's going on? But I want to just wish you and Nancy the best also. It's weird, right? Like I'm gone from Huntington, you're gone from Huntington, Kim's gone. And we had some good times together. I don't have anything formal prepared and I don't want to cry, but first of all, I expect an invitation. So when COVID is done and you can have people down, I know Bobby Rogan would love to come down and play golf. But in all seriousness, you know, I think this goes back to a conversation in your kitchen over a cup of coffee a really long time ago. And I'm just really glad that we had that conversation and I'm really glad that you gave Running for the Board some thought because you have been such a tremendous asset to the community. You're not afraid to be empathic and compassionate, but like Jen said, you're also thorough and responsible and really cognizant of your due diligence and the rules in terms of making sure that you do things the right way and not just because you think it should be done. And I listened to Jim talk about some of the things that we got done in the time that we were all on the board together. And it was a lot. And things were kind of a mess and we kind of un-messed them together as a team. And I was actually just texting with Jen, Jen earlier this morning, this afternoon, and saying to her, we were just talking about like how special that time was. We had a lot of laughs. We had some tears, but when it came down to it, I think that, that board, especially that, that sort of that first round, you know, we knew we had a lot to repair and to build back and to restore trust and confidence and show people what Huntington's really made of. And I just feel like I will never forget having that time together, all those late night calls and texts. And there may have been some tequila involved, not in board-related activities, but there may have been.
I know nothing about that.
The social environment only. But look at Jim's face. Jim.
Big fight, Mrs. Rogan, but I think you're coming up on your three minutes.
Anyway, I just want to say I wish you the best. I'm going to miss you. I do, do not think this is forever, but I just thank you for your service and I know that Huntington is a better place because of you, so.
Thank you, Emily. You're, you're always welcome. You know that. And, and I know I'm always welcome in New York City, so it's a good thing.
100%. I have an awesome roof deck. It's a great building.
Have to sleep on the roof? Anyway.
Thank you, Emily. Anybody, are there any other hands?
Hold on a second. No, we're good.
Okay. Then we move to, we don't really have any action items, so they're pretty much all, well, first two at least are in your court. Mr. Polansky, right?
Okay. Bear with me for a second because I am going to switch my screen up here. I'm going to do this the right way. So one of the things that we certainly look forward to at this time of year is our performing group, some of them across the district, taking an opportunity to share with us some of their gifts and the special things that they do at this time of year. This has obviously been a very challenging time for all of us as, as adults and the kids have felt a great deal of the anxiety and the stress as well. And just to keep them engaged with things that are meaningful to them, that they enjoy, that's more than important to us at this point. So I'd like to share a few of the short performance-related items that are. short performance-related items that our chamber choir and our our young folks at Finley put together. And I may have to shut my video off a couple of times as we do this, so. One second here. Bear with me, I'm gonna have to share my screen a couple of times here. So the first two pieces you're going to hear are performances of the Huntington High School Chamber Choir, and then we'll finish with a little gift from our Finley musicians and staff members. Spirits of the season. That last scene is not supposed to be a predictor of anything to come this week.
Exactly my thought.
So I just preface this with the the fact that the images you'll see here are not current. It's hard to watch just because that's what we long to return to. And we will, we'll get back there. So stay with me. Tom, are you leaving the suit?
No comment. Will not reveal that.
Thank you to Mr. Reynolds, to Ms. Garberino, and to the Huntington High School Chamber Choir. A lot of what they do now is via Zoom, via Google Classroom, and it's not easy to sync up when you have students in the room, students at home. The passion that these kids demonstrate on a routine basis is never is never at a loss for anyone, and we will get back to the time when we can see what we just saw again.
I should mention that as we speak, the Huntington High School Drama Club is also videotaping their production, so expect that soon.
Okay, this is a this is a fun treat that was prepared by Mr. Batista, Mrs. Graber, and many of our students at Finley, so enjoy this.
Love that.
Of course, it would have to be, no. I was trying to figure out exactly what Mrs. Rothel's gift was, and I initially thought it was beef jerky, and I'm glad that I'm forgive me, Mr. Batista, forgive me, Mrs. Graber. That was wonderful. Thank you again to Mr. Reynolds and everybody involved in creating all three of those pieces. Okay. And of course, happy holidays, everyone. Stay with me. Okay. Are we ready, Christine, to move on?
Yeah.
All right, not to spend a great deal of time discussing COVID, but we are still in the thick of things here, and just to provide as much of an update as I can provide at this point. Believe me, I do not enjoy sending home these notifications on a routine basis, but I want to make sure that everybody in this community knows what I know, and that there is not a piece of information left out. And I know some would rather not receive them, but we've started and are going to finish with every piece of information on the table. It helps people make decisions. We are obviously receiving new information on a routine basis, new guidance, new instructions, new mandates. They change almost daily, and I am turning on the governor on a daily basis, as many of you are, to catch up with what the mandate of the day or the change of the day is going to be. So we've been talking about these micro cluster hotspots for some time now. And I do want to point out that the latest update is dated December 4th, 2020. These are all public documents. This was released by the Department of Health to clarify what the requirements are in red and orange zones. I've gotten a lot of questions about yellow zones. Please understand that Huntington is not in a designated zone at this point. I have no indication that that's going to happen today, tomorrow, or the next day. They seem to be on a pattern now to give school districts via email directly to the superintendent from the Department of Health, a heads up a few days in advance if that is going to happen. Like I said, I have no indication at this point. That could change at any time, and the changes that have recently been made relate to requirements in an orange and a red zone. I'll get to the latest in a second, but initially, and actually, I think there's a better way to show this. So this is the December 4th memo that did change those requirements in an orange and a red zone. Does it concisely? But I think I'm better off, I'm gonna move off this document. And I'm going to go to this document which shows for the most part, what we were, what we were looking at a few days ago. So the yellow zone requirements have not changed since November 16th. Right now, if you're designated yellow, you must test 20% of your in-school population biweekly until you can demonstrate that the infection rate, the seven-day rolling, the infection rate in the school is below the seven-day rolling average positivity rate in the designated geographic area. Once you do that, as long as that yellow zone designation is in place, you don't have to test anymore. The tests, as most of you, if not all of you, know that we would be using are those supplied by New York State. They're Abbott Finex now, rapid antigen tests. I do understand that there's a difference between a rapid test and a PCR test. But the testing that is taking place for the most part across Long Island right now, they're using those kits to alleviate the cost for districts. But that, as I mentioned, has not changed since mid-November. The orange and red zone requirements have changed. Initially, and this is LinkedIn Board Doc, so you can see this after the fact, it is a public document. This was put together by my Association Executive Board. Initially, you were going to have to close for four days after a zone designation, orange or red. Now, there is no such requirement in place, and the school can remain open as long as it has made the commitment to testing X percent of its in-school population. For orange, it's 20%. For red, it's 30%. And it's ongoing testing. So if that orange zone is in place for more than a month, you'd have to test 20% over the month, 10% biweekly, the other half biweekly. And then you'd have to test again at the beginning, or starting at the beginning of the second month, if that zone designation has not changed, and for a red zone, the threshold is 30% of in-person in-school testing. The metric that would be used to determine if a school could stay open, if there are more than nine positive cases throughout that testing, or 3% if the number tested in that building, in that school building is more than 300. So nine cases or 3% positive, the school would have to close for the duration of that zone designation. Now, as of now, and I've tried to make this, I'm trying to make sure the information is out there, but it's also as clear as possible for those that are reading the communications. The district would be taking advantage of the limited service laboratory application and status of the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And I do believe that Suffolk County has that, Nassau County does not. I don't know as much about Nassau County, obviously, because it doesn't impact us, but there is a difference in status there. And we have, as you know, on November 30th, the board very graciously approved the agreement with ATC Healthcare Services that will allow us to use medical personnel, specifically LPNs and medical assistants, to assist us with the testing as far as it needs to go in each of the buildings that may be designated. And what that does is it frees up our nurses to do some of the supervisory work, again, under the LSL provided by the county. And in school would be in session, supposedly in session, they would still have a job to do with the kids who are in the building. So that's basically where we stand at this point. And I also would like to point out, and then I'll open it up, obviously, to questions from the board. The governor did indicate just on Friday, because we've been really trying hard to find information and to follow the zone status, the metrics that are being used, and he's Department of Health and the governor have moved off this 2.5% yellow, 3% orange, 4% red. They are looking now more so at hospital capacity. And he even said today in his Monday address that once they believe at the state level, Department of Health level, that a region is approaching 90% hospital capacity within three weeks, we risk entering New York pause stage in that reason. So they are very concerned about hospital capacity. They are very concerned about death rate at this point. But you can see here that it's become a little bit more difficult to predict because we don't necessarily have data related to hospitals in our area, but it seems that based on what he said this morning, in general, Long Island is holding its own. Suffolk has been hovering around 6% for the past few weeks. Nassau has been a little bit lower than that. But, you know, obviously, he continues to cite the small home gatherings as the primary source of community spread, and it's impossible to keep that out of schools at this point. And I will tell you that we are struggling. We are struggling primarily because we are working with, in some cases, reduced staff capacity. If there is a contact in a building and a quarantine determination is made, that could take out a number of staff members, and we've had to piece it together. We're hanging on. But I know this has been the challenge that most schools are facing. And listen, we want kids in school, but under no circumstance are we going to continue that if we can't do it safely. But at this point, despite the number of cases that we've seen and the significant increase that's taken place over the past two weeks following Thanksgiving, you're not seeing connections among cases. We do see siblings. A lot of what the young people get, it's the result of a positive adult case in the house. Some are untraceable, but, you know, obviously, at the elementary level at this point, if there is a student case in the classroom and that classroom is is more, it's no longer a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday hybrid model, that class is in all likelihood going to be quarantined unless there was very few students in on that day, and that has not been the case. And that was the decision we made when we moved off the hybrid model, K through five at this point, knowing that a quarantine would probably take out a class. Unlike at the high school level, at the middle school and high school, there is still a great deal of distance between our kids, between staff and kids. It's primarily because we're still working hybrid. And there are a lot of students who are fully remote at this point, and it does make a difference. So that's where we stand for now. Every day it changes. We are, you know, again, our focus is on keeping kids well-educated and keeping schools open. But I'll mention it again, if there becomes a concern related to staff or staffing, or a concern related to how community spread will impact schools, or vice versa, then we can make another decision. Right now, we're looking to move into the break and everybody needs, I know some time, but that time cannot be in the form of, really can't be in the form of the things that are causing this to proliferate. And I know there's a vaccine on the table right now that is not going to happen overnight. There's still a lot of work to be done there. This could go on for the next couple of months, and behaviors will make a difference, one way or the other.
Can you unmute Bill, please?
I can find him. Hang on, Bill, I'm coming.
His dogs are barking.
Oh, is that what that was?
Yeah, you didn't want to hear my dogs.
By the way, probably the therapy dog came back to Finley and was a big hit, so. We welcome.
Great. Such an adorable dog. Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
Um, has the number of fully remote students gone up, stayed the same, gone down?
You know what?
And my follow-up question to that is, how is their attendance?
It has, it has, and Beth, you can help me here. I think some have flipped. Oh, you're muted also.
She's muted.
Some have flipped to fully remote, and some have come back. I think following Thanksgiving, there was some concern on the part of some families, and I certainly can't blame them for this. And the kids did stay out for a period of time before and after. So listen, it's a tough time, and we're trying to be as flexible as possible with our families so that they know that they have options. We're also trying to maintain our instructional integrity as well. You know, the balance between education and health, we don't want them to be mutually exclusive and them to oppose each other. But this, again, this is a challenging time. Beth, can you add to the remote numbers?
Because you've been I have seen an increase in fully remote students. Most of them are requesting to be fully remote through the end of January. Just because they're, you know, I guess, attempting to get through the holiday season and because of the uptick since Thanksgiving. So that's the trend that we've seen. We've also seen some students coming back, particularly at the elementary level to the full five-day-a-week model, because I think everyone realizes that there's nothing that could ever replace being in person with a teacher. So and we know our teachers are working tremendously hard to accommodate and teaching this hybrid model, and they're really doing a fabulous job.
Absolutely. Oh, you muted her already again.
She muted herself.
I was just wondering about the attendance or engagement from those that are fully remote. Has it been The attendance or engagement from those that are fully remote. Is it, has it been consistent or do we know?
So, and, you know, at the varying levels, teachers are reaching out. We have attendance teams in place. That are reaching out to those students that are not participating regularly. We do have some students that are participating in some subjects. Particularly at the secondary level, but perhaps not in other subjects. So teachers are working diligently with administration to make sure we're reaching out to our families. Neighborhood aides have been involved with that as well. There's home visits in some circumstances when we, you know, really want to make sure kids are engaging. And we're not able to get in touch. So there's tremendous outreach with, with all of our staff in the district and particularly with the teachers.
I know there, there are some concerns, particularly at the secondary level, where, where the kids come in and their cameras are off. And you really can't see what's going on behind the scenes. We have not gotten to the point where we are requiring cameras to be on. There are some concerns there. But I know Mr. Cusack and, and his team at the high school have been very strongly encouraging kids to turn their, their. Their video on when they're in the, in the Google meter classroom.
I do want to add, you know, so, some families, just as we hear dogs barking when we're on muted and, and children, there's a lot of activity in some households. So it's really not optimal. So we're being very flexible and understanding with home environments. And we're just really excited and hopeful that someday we'll, someday soon, we'll all be back in person.
Beth, I have a follow-up question. That trend you're seeing of increased number on remote, is that more at the high school level or cross grades?
I would say it's more at the high school level recently, at the secondary level. I, I think at the elementary, many and most families are very happy to have their children back five days a week. And due to the fact we're not seeing it spread through the classrooms, I think it was confidence in that. It's just the, the quarantining that's required. At this point, when a new case develops, whether it's an adult bringing it in or a student, is, is causing some challenges for coverage.
There's been a lot of discussion about the, the period of quarantine, because the CDC did come out. Not too long ago with a recommendation to reduce the requirement from fourteen days to seven days. If asymptomatic and ten days, if there's a symptom involved. But the bottom line is the New York State Department of Health has not adopted those guidelines or recommendations at this point. If you look at the New York State Department of Health website or the Suffolk County Department of Health website, you will see that the quarantine period for a. A person who's been exposed is still fourteen days. A person who has tested positive, the isolation period is ten days. If you are positive, you must be symptom-free for seventy-two hours before returning, and you do need clearance from the Department of Health. Then we provided instruction as to how to get that. And as far as a quarantine goes, if, or if you've had a symptom and you've tested negative. You still need to be symptom-free for twenty-four hours before returning, and you would have to provide in that situation evidence of negative test results. And understand, there have been situations where somebody tests negative one day and three days later, tests positive. So this is not an easy situation to predict. And, you know, there is a difference between a rapid and a PCR test, and, and we, we've, we've seen it. One is definitely more accurate than the other. And typically, the rapid comes first. So.
Right. We've had, we've had people test, both tests on the same day and have different results, right?
Can we go, just go back to the, putting the cameras on at the second, it's this, it's at Finley as well. Where they're encouraging students. I have one at home, so I know. What?
Tough age.
Yeah, it is. And the other, the other thing I want to say is not really, it's not a question, but just going through all of this. And listening to you just describe the whole quarantine process. We, we are doing, or you and the staff, the teachers. Things that we never would have imagined a year ago. These are things that are not in what should be our core competency as a district, teaching. Children, teaching students. And I appreciate even more listening to this presentation about the microclusters. That the governor changes things. Daily, hourly, and the adjustments that need to be made and the decisions that need to be made are. Incredibly. Complex. And to, I just want to, just want to say again that. I respect everyone involved in all the decision-making and analyzing the data and contact tracing. Testing. These are things that are not in our core competency. And to have, to have staff do this and put their attention to it. In addition to teach students is. Is amazing to me. And I, I just, just wanted to say how much I appreciate the efforts that are going into that and point out to those listening. Out in the public that the work that goes on behind the scenes is a tremendous, a tremendous amount of work. I, I don't know how it gets done everybody, every day, but it does.
Now, just speaking anecdotally, and. This happens all the time. I, you know, I'm not getting into classrooms as often as I would like for obvious reasons, but we are still conducting observations. I happened to observe a teacher at Woodhull the other day, and, and it was, you know, it was just such a pleasure to be in a room for an hour. I, I stayed longer than I probably, I probably outstayed my welcome there. But the kids, it was a lesson on fact and opinion. And the teacher was bringing in current day. Statements made about vaccines. And it was just such a pleasure to watch these kids in action in terms of applying higher-order thinking skills. In a modern-day context and working together. It's hard to work together these days, but it was getting done. And I will tell you, Michelle, you mentioned teachers. As I'm sitting in that room, custodian in the building must have walked in, this was at Woodhull, must have walked in three times to clean every doorknob. And every handle in that room. So this, this, this is a full-team approach here. And, and I have to tell you, our custodial staff is doing ridiculously outstanding work around the clock. The support from every unit in this district has, has been. Enormous. And, and there is not a, there, there is not a cog in this wheel that, that is not necessary. And I, I couldn't be prouder. I really couldn't be. And I get to do this again tomorrow morning in another building, but, you know, it's important for us to make time just to keep connected to, to the things that. We're all about as a school district, but we have to get through this. I do want to mention just briefly the, the testing process. I, I know there is some reticence out there about the testing. The survey response was much more. Voluminous than the response to the consent. And I know people are probably waiting until the testing is an absolute necessity. But I do believe we have a good process in place. And I, you know, ideally, we'd like to be able to test children very quickly. But I also understand that there are going to be parents who don't want that done unless they can be present. And, and we are going to, to do our best to work out those arrangements if needed as well.
Any other questions on the? Update? Okay. Then the, do you want me to address the third thing, Jim?
Sure.
All right, I had asked. Jim to put this on the agenda because as time's been going by, I. Haven't heard, you know, no one has heard a definite answer yet from the state about what their intentions are. With regard to any kind of mandated testing. At any of the, I don't believe at any of the great levels. So I wanted to put it out there to see what you all thought about. Perhaps crafting some sort of a letter to the regions to, I guess it would be to the region sort of state ad. To encourage them to, say, earlier than last year, to make a commitment that. The children won't be, that the students will not be held accountable for the re, taking the region's exams. Or the state assessments. So I wanted to open that up to a conversation. So I don't.
Ideas, food for thought, and then any feedback from the board. You know, the argument. Related to assessments, we're, we're working with as a, as a, as a district, and Beth and Kathy know this, as we have our administrative meetings. We are looking for data to use in determining where the gaps are and, and what needs to be done, instructionally, learning-wise, et cetera. It's very difficult when you have limited amounts of data to work with. So we are doing our own benchmarking. We are using Ames Web Plus. We're using the tools that we have available to us. But each one of those tools is limited. And the more data you have to, to look at to help us diagnose and prescribe what's needed for individual students, the better. The problem we're facing now is we're missing a, a big chunk of data that goes back to last, you know, before last March. So it's not, I, I, I don't think it's the assessments that are. What's scaring people. You know, I do think putting kids through that at this point with all the trauma that they have experienced. Not the best idea in the world, but to put those assessments in place, to have kids take them, to use it for a. Punitive accountability process. Yeah. You know, for a district that has multiple subgroups that are not necessarily huge in nature. It, it's really, the gaps have widened, and we are working diligently to keep those gaps from widening further. And I think, like, like Michelle mentioned, our instructional staff is doing a phenomenal job. Just keeping kids engaged and, and keeping them focused. But, you know, there, there's an inevitability here that there's going to be work to done when. Work to be done when this is all over. And the accountability process, I, I'm not sure that SA ever worked perfectly in terms of. Doing what it was supposed to do for a school district. I know its purpose, and its purpose may be noble in terms of making sure no children fall through the cracks. But, you know, we've, we've, we've done relatively well with it. But the, you know, bottom line is it, it's very easy for school districts to be unnecessarily targeted. In general. And then you put this pandemic for the last year in place, and of course, seven months, whatever it's been to this point, it's a problem. So we're, we're not just talking about assessments here. We're talking about the S accountability process moving forward.
Jim, so I, I understand what you're saying. You're in favor of assessments so that we have the data for our district?
I, I, I wouldn't say I'm in favor of the assessments, particularly right now in, in light of everything else that our children have gone through. But I understand the argument that the data from them is, is important. And, and what else can we do to gather data? That will give us a sense of how we're doing within district and, and relative to, to, that, that was the, the purpose of SA. So if you compare the ENL students or the. Economically disadvantaged students in one district to those in another district, you can get a sense of how you're performing, et cetera, et cetera. That data, I don't know how accurately that can be used or that process can be performed at this point.
And is there some sort of discussion at this time that they're thinking about bringing some assessments to the districts?
So I know, and I'll let Beth speak to this a little bit more in detail, because she's the assistant subs-counsel that she's on, has these conversations routinely. They're looking at regional options that may be able to replace what New York State would typically do in the spring. The problem is right now, we don't know what the spring's going to look like. And, and honestly, this, this is going to go on for the next couple of months. There, there is, there is light somewhere out there at the end of this tunnel. But April and May, they may not. Our kids, this situation may not be ready. I don't, Beth, you muted yourself again. If you want to speak to that process.
I'm sorry, my Zoom etiquette, when I stop talking, I automatically. As far as the assessments go, you know, the January regions were canceled. We're awaiting the decision on the three through eight and the region's exams for June. What we've requested at this point from BOCs is to consider creating regional assessments just so that we can have valid and reliable assessments. Hopefully, that we can. Another and relative to other districts. I'm not sure if BOCs will create that. I've reached out to Nassau BOCs and to Western Suffolk. There's a group of districts in the Western Suffolk region that are interested in working on something like this together. They originally asked if we would like to send teachers to attend and help create these assessments, but we really do not have the coverage in district to do that. But they do have specialists at the BOCs at their levels, you know, ELA and math specialists that could perhaps create assessments. That could be utilized across districts. So we would have some data to, to just see how our kids are doing. So we can inform our instructional programming for future months and years. Because right now, the data is limited that is valid, reliable, and across districts. And that is one piece that state assessment data, data gave us, was it did compare our subgroups with other districts, with like districts, with unlike districts. And it gave us a, a, a point of reference as to what we needed to work on. It helped us to look at standards. Particular questions on each assessment that perhaps we need to improve our instruction on, or areas that we were doing really well in. That perhaps we could spend less time on and move on to. So, you know, we're, we're missing that. And, and we're hoping if we do not have our state assessments, which. Again, as Mr. Polanski stated, have a, a great use, but at times with SA and accountability, they're used in a way that doesn't really support us. If we could truly have an assessment that would allow us to look at student achievement and look at student growth and allow us to inform our instruction. That's really the purpose of assessment, and it would be great if we could use something like that this year.
One of the things that the state did indicate weeks back was that if all, all students were not back in person. That they would not administer the state assessments. I, I don't know what authority they had to say that, because it really is not a state decision. It is a federal decision. And then one, Betsy DeBose, came out and said, well, we're going to cancel the NAEP exams, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. We're going to cancel the nationally standardized exams, but the states will still administer theirs. And, and, and too bad. We don't want to spend the money at the federal level. It's cost hardship, administration hardship, but the states will figure it out. And that's a short sight. That's not, that's not a situation that any state should be placed in right now. And I do think that our, our interim commissioner, Rosa, is, is sensitive to that and is. Doing all she can to help the right decision be made.
Beth, I have a question. The assessments that you're sort of advocating for would be mostly for primary? Or would you also hope to see something at the secondary level like a regions to give that kind of feedback?
So one of the, that Nassau.
Lesson.
Provided us was, it was ten or twelve questions, grades three through eight and some regions level questions that we were able to use as a benchmark. After the first quarter. It was able to be given online. So for students that were remote or in-person or hybrid, we're able to do the same assessment. It was quick. And it just gave us some data as to what standards our kids struggling with. And it was more review actually from the prior year. So that was just good data to have. So we can say, all right, here are some of the gaps that we have. Now we need to move forward in looking at this data. And then, you know, using that data to inform our instruction. So I haven't really, you know, what I asked for is for something especially for the third or fourth. Quarter at the end of the year, so we can see what, what gaps we have and what we really need to do moving forward into the following school year. And it will take time to create. So we would hope that they would have something, what I, my request was for three through eight and, and regions level courses. What, whether they decide to move forward with the project at the BOCs level is really up to them, but I'm kind of persuasive.
That, what, what Beth just said, I thought of, that's really, I mean, it's important to begin with. But for example, like if you're taking out, if you took algebra last year. Those eight, the eighth graders, right? It was the first cohort that, not to use that word, but. That was taking, everyone's taking algebra. So if we have a gap, which we know we have a gap because of the nature of the, the way the spring worked. So we're starting, many kids are starting at a disadvantage with algebra two. So the gap will just keep growing.
And our teachers did a phenomenal job in September and early October of assessing what students were, you know, lacking perhaps from the spring slide. But again, we, you know, they're working with limited assessment capacity as well, because some students are in-person and some are home. And it is a more challenging environment to assess, even with assessments that they've created over the years that they've used as common assessments. So a lot more has to be critical thinking assessments, because if kids are at home taking an assessment, they, they have access to the internet and things like that. So teachers have been very creative with how they're assessing this year. But we, we felt that if we could provide them with something that they could utilize or even modify. It would help us to, to really see where our students are falling and, and the areas that we need to improve on.
I think the same way, it would be beneficial for their, the accountability piece to be removed for a school district. It's the same with the students. I think you get a much more honest picture because they're virtual. If the accountability and the grade is, is removed, they're more likely, I would think. To do it with some honesty and fidelity.
I have two follow-up questions to that. Have those assessments of third and fourth quarter last year been given yet in any grades? Just the informal few questions that you had mentioned.
Can you repeat that? You said to have the third and fourth quarter.
Yeah, have, has any, have any assessments been given yet this year to see where any gaps might have been from third and fourth quarter? Any gaps might have been from third and fourth quarter of last year?
Well, I I wouldn't say formal, we have done benchmark assessments, yes, and teachers have been. Formally and informally assessing students pretty much throughout every lesson. I mean, I've been doing observations as well and the amount of informal. Assessments they're using near pod, they're doing on the spot assessments. So even though students don't realize they're being assessed. In the form of a quiz or a test, teachers are collecting data throughout every class period and informing their instruction on on the spot. And then also for future planning. Exit tickets. Most of our teachers are using exit tickets at the close of a lesson to see if students have understand have understood the concept that was taught. And also exit tickets similarly are used at the end of, you know, larger units to see are there areas that still need to be worked worked on. So we have not implemented necessarily a full battery, but we did even in the at the elementary level. We just did our quarterly for E L A and math. It was modified significantly from what we've done in the past because we didn't want to lose the instructional time. On the assessment as well as knowing that some kids are remote and it's much harder to assess them that way. We have been, you know, getting an idea as to where they're falling, but again, the assessment process is very different this year because of the model instruction that we have.
Okay. And then my my other question is, would students or parents be given advanced notice of the assessments? Or would it just kind of be more of an informal on the spot type thing like you're speaking about?
If if we're use if the purpose of the assessment is to get an idea as to where students are. You know, as far as a benchmark or something like that, a formal letter wouldn't normally go out because it's really just a spot check to say, okay. Here's where we are. Here's what we need to do to move forward. It's really to inform instruction. If it's something that's being utilized for a grade or a weighted assessment like that, you know, then students would be reminded, please study for this on Friday or something like that. Generally, you know, if we're modeling our E L A assessment, let's say, and we're giving a passage with five. Multiple choice questions and a short answer, that's really to build stamina and see how students are doing with those types of questions. So it really depends on the use of the assessment. Anything that's formal and requires, you know, parent notification, that would usually come from the teacher.
Okay, I just asked because I know that can be a source of a lot of anxiety for some kids if they know that they have an assessment coming up. I don't know what the better way to do it is. I was just wondering from that standpoint.
And even for our aims web assessments that we use utilize K through eight, those take place at three checkpoints during the year. September, January and May, and those are really just for. They're doing in a norm referenced test. And that helps us also to use as a point of data to determine if students need additional services. But again, there's meetings about students that we're seeing any any downward trend or if we see that they're not in the average range. Teachers are involved within those meetings, obviously, and give their recommendations or they might say, you know, that child had. A difficult time with that assessment, but in all their classwork, they're doing very well and they're doing, you know, well on all their other assessments. So it really is a team approach to look at each student and we really don't. Want to put any stress on students when they're taking those types of assessments because it really is just to gather information. So we can support them in the ways they need it.
Thanks.
And those assessments, Kelly, those aims web plus assessments, they're really designed to be screeners. And we use them for a little bit more than that. But there's no one data point here that's going to give us all the information we need. So, you know, ideally, we're trying to gather as much as possible. And Beth was describing that assessment through instruction process. There's nobody in a better place to to. Diagnose learning gaps and just pick up on nuances that that, you know, you can't see from. Ames web plus data point or benchmark data point. Our teachers are in a perfect position to do that and they are. They are getting it done to the best of their ability under the circumstances.
Yeah.
Right. And that was my reason for wanting to. Have this discussion, so.
No, we often work through. I meet routinely with the eighteen Western Suffolk. Superintendents and the D S, the Western Suffolk BOCs D S. And she often does the advocating on behalf of the eighteen districts and very very responsive to us. And the message that we'd like to send. We also meet as a cluster just to kind of keep the pulse on what's going on more locally and Beth also meets with. Her, the eighteen Western Suffolk Assistant Superintendent and Kathy meets routinely with the eighteen Western Suffolk. Assistant Superintendent for business or business officials. So. You know, we're and the collaboration among districts at this point is is at an all time high. I have to tell you, I mean, I've always been involved in that. But I'm seeing, you know, people come in now that really have not been as engaged in that respect that are now. Putting more of their voice in. So, you know, we're hearing what's happening and we are providing input into what's happening. Whether they listen in every regard, that's a whole nother story, but. Whoever they whoever they is.
Do we have any idea when they might? Make a decision?
My guess is sometime after January twenty first. When. Things may change at the United States Department of Education.
So I guess the my general question is, do you think that, do you all think this is a point that we should? Be advocating one way or the other, or do you think we should wait till January? Do you think we should talk about it again then? Or do you think this is something that you all want to have your voice heard on one way or the other?
Maybe wait and I mean.
I don't see how it could hurt to put some. Right?
What'd you say, Tom?
I don't see how it could hurt to put something together.
Michelle, you were going to say something.
I was going to say, wait to see, I mean, it's. A month away, see if they. I don't know, maybe I'm being Pollyanna that they're going to say we're not going to assess this year.
There's a there's a lot riding on that that month in time. What we're talking about now and also. Bipartisan federal aid package that will. Alleviate some of the fiscal concern that school districts have across the country, no less in New York State. So. We've we've been receiving our aid packages. Doesn't mean, I mean, districts are getting through. Most districts are getting through fiscally this year. It's the next couple of years that are going to be tough. Primarily because there's going to be some some gaps that have to be filled. Although certain things did not, I'm not going to say anything. It'll just get, I don't want to. I don't want to jinx anything.
I thought you were going to say you don't want me quoted in the newspaper. Xavier, do you have an opinion?
No, I mean, I think that what we're hearing is that there is a need for the assessment. And hopefully they realize that the accountability aspect of it isn't something that's going to be good for either our teachers. Or the students and it sounds like Beth is is on her way to advocating for something at least at a local level. And I agree that she is very persuasive.
Can I just add one more thing? I just want to add the administration of those assessments would nearly be impossible. If we were not all back in school, so whether or not it's a good idea to have the data. It is an impossible assessment, three through eight and those regions exams in a secure environment. I don't know how it's possible that it could be administered in a hybrid learning environment or a remote.
And in that context, there are many, many districts across this state. That do not have the technology to do this remotely. We, I mean, we have a socioeconomic range in Huntington. But as a school district, we are, we are well equipped right now. There are districts all over the state, not necessarily down here, but some. That do not have Chromebooks in children's hands, that do not have the appropriate technological support. That would provide what's needed for them to even consider taking the assessments offsite. So I don't know what what plan they could put in place to address that. And you can't find a Chromebook at this point from any company.
Nope.
And there may be light at the end of that tunnel, but I don't see kids being vaccinated by April, May, you know, it's not even approved for them.
Okay, Bill?
I think it's a very good, valid, pertinent conversation. I just think that we are a little bit early. Yeah, I think. We're gonna, it's going to be towards the end of February, I think, when things really start to become clear. I'm gonna say right here, I'll be surprised if they end up administering the regions exams. But I do absolutely think that, you know, as everyone said, what we're doing as far as. We still need some assessments to benchmark and guide and inform our instruction and sounds like, you know, Beth is all over that and that's that's what we need.
Yeah, and honestly, it's a valuable conversation to have. Now, in January. Hey, it's a pleasure to discuss student progress, though there are gaps as opposed to a virus. We just, and I think this this message is out there now that midterm week is not going to be what midterm week typically is. Putting our our kids in that position is not a wise move and we are. Along with many other districts choosing not to go in that direction. You know, again, the challenges beyond the classroom have have really continued to impact, but we again do not lose sight. Of the. End goal here, there is keep your eyes on the prize because at some point this will be over and we do need to be cognizant. We don't want to be left not having considered some of these things until the day this ends. Which will come at some point.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I guess part of the reason why I brought this up, which might not be directly on point is. You know, I feel like I'm hearing from a lot of people. That some of the students are hitting like a wall, like a emotional wall, kind of, you know, in the spring, we. You know, we had a certain amount of time to get to the end and it was. You know, they made it and now it's just so endless that. There's. Just the thought of having those exams out there. I think is part of what I was was where I was coming from too, you know. Does that make any sense? It without the without the. Not that we're teaching to the test, but you're teaching about the test and teaching how to take the test and teaching certain kinds of questions because you know they're on the test. Or whatever, without them, it would just free up the teachers to to just address what the what the students really need to know. You know, and what they're really lacking and I just, you know. That was why that was why I wanted to talk about it.
If you can, the conversation should be ongoing. And we can revisit status.
We're all good with that. You want to talk about it again and after the holidays? After the new administration or?
It's a great idea. I think we should revisit it later.
I agree.
Okay. Well, thank you all for all your thoughts on it. I really appreciate having the conversation. All right. So that brings us to curriculum and instruction. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve C S E C P S E submissions as delineated. Could I get a motion to approve?
Linda.
Linda and a second from Xavier. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
That's everybody. Back to back to you, Ms. McCoy. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education adopt the attached comprehensive education plan for Finley Middle. Okay, could I have a motion? Tom and a second.
Kelly.
From Kelly. Questions? Is there anything you wanted to say? Beth or Trina spoke? I I can share.
Go to the goals of the document.
Okay, so similar to the D CIP plan that was approved in July, we have a building level plan, which is very much in line with the district level plan. And the building level plan, there are five goals. They're a little bit different than the district, but they all go towards the same end goal of improving student achievement. By June of twenty twenty one, the first goal, sixty percent of classrooms will post and reference. High quality learning targets that reflect the rigor of the New York State E L A standards. And the second goal is to do the same for the math standards. We are providing professional development throughout the district in the spring to support getting to this goal. The second, the third goal, this was based on survey data that was done at Finley Middle School. Teachers, students and parents were given a survey just to collect information. And really, especially during this time, the results were tremendously supportive of the building and of the leadership. One of the areas that we thought could be improved upon based on the student results was that. We would increase by five percent on the student voice survey in the area of our school leader walks around our school and visits classrooms. And what we discussed is that this year we have all been less visible than we have in the past because we've been trying not to. You know, be in person as much as we used to. So we're going to be increasing that starting in January in a safe way and we're going to make a concerted effort. It's been a very classrooms and I can't tell you, as Mr. Polanski said earlier, just going to classroom observations is like the best part of all of our weeks. And I'm sure the teachers, as nervous as they may be, because I remember being observed as a teacher, they're just so happy to be with you and be in classrooms and see kids. Challenging year. The fourth goal, by June twenty twenty one. A hundred percent of the Finley medical middle school staff will be ready to implement the task force developed. Honor roll celebration and this celebration will acknowledge students who have demonstrated academic progress every ten weeks. So normally we have the honor roll for students who have a certain average and other things. This is on a role. So students who are on a goal to better achievement. And this is something that we will acknowledge kids that maybe don't, you know, haven't been on the honor roll. But are working their way towards it and really celebrating those students. So that's a great new initiative that Ms. Rothel will be implementing with her wonderful staff at Finley. And the last one for number five is implementing our revised pandemic attendance procedures. So we had attendance procedures in the past that we really needed to change this year and adjust based on our new hybrid learning, remote learning environment. Different timeframes as to when to contact families, how frequently sending letters home, those types of things that all go through. The clerical works with our building administration. To review lists very frequently to determine who is attending, who's not attending, who might need to be. You know, we might need to reach out via phone, letter, home visit, those types of things. Because we really do want to have decreased chronic absenteeism, which is one of the things that we're working on as a district as well. So those are the five goals for Finley. They were developed by Finley administrators. District level administrators are also on that team as well as teachers and a parent. So thank you to that team for creating that document. And we will be moving forward in January with achieving those goals. Thank you. That's fantastic. Okay, so all in favor? And back to personnel. Thank you so much, Ms. McCoy.
I am asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules one, three, five, eight, ten, eleven, thirteen, sixteen and twenty two.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Linda.
Linda and a second from Tom. All in favor?
Hi.
That looks like everybody. Some announcements.
Yes, just one this evening. We have been in. A place for some time now without a director of science, technology, engineering and mathematics. It's been a long process. We've gone through multiple iterations of interviews. And tonight I thank the board for appointing Dr. Teresa Rosani as our new K through twelve. Director of STEM and she's on with us tonight.
Welcome, Dr. Rosani.
Hello.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm so, so excited to be here this evening. I can't thank you enough for your support. And really, and being so refined and caring. And I'm really excited to be to start my my journey as part of the Huntington family. So again, thanks again.
Welcome aboard. Happy to have you.
Welcome. Okay. And to Dr. Acker.
Hey, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve items I through M on this evening's business agenda.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the?
Bill.
Bill and a second from Xavier. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, that's everybody. Were there? Are there announcements Xavier? Remember?
No.
No, okay.
That's nice.
Okay. That brings us to our second public commentary. Same rules apply at the beginning, except. You may speak on any subject except for personnel or student matters. We have any raised electronically raised hands.
Do we have any raised electronically raised hands?
No.
Okay, are there any closing remarks besides, I'd just like to wish everybody happy holidays?
I'd like to go.
What's that?
I'd like to go. I haven't made my Tom comments yet.
Oh, yes, okay. Let me just wish everybody happy holidays.
I wanted to make sure I was the last one. I wanted to get the last word in.
Go ahead.
So let's see, I first met Tom as a neighbor here on Chestnut Street. I knew him raising guide dogs, then he moved on to raising children. I gotta tell you, my favorite memory of Tom was the Halloween that he dressed up as a scarecrow and he sat still on his front step. And then when the kids would come up, he would jump at them and scare all the candy run out of their buckets, myself included. It was outrageously funny, but it was just typical Tom. You know, everyone else has said, spoke so much and spoke so highly, all the personal accolades. And I'm not going to repeat all that because everyone was spot on. I'm just going to summarize and say, Tom, you are an awesome guy. We as a community are better off for having you been a part of us and choosing to engage in the way that you did. And I know I and everyone else really, really truly appreciate all that you've done and wish you, Nancy and Casey, nothing but the best of luck as you move on to the next phase of your life.
Thank you, Bill, much appreciated, especially from you and our long history.
Long history.
Okay, then anybody else have a final comment?
Just want to wish everybody happy holidays and a safe holiday. Just to reiterate what Michelle said earlier today, I want to thank the administration, the teachers for everything you've done. You're certainly working outside of your job description, but you're not working outside of your lanes. And you really have done a fabulous job with the kids. And I can't wait till this is over again and we can see each other all in person and happy holidays again.
Here, here.
Thanks Xavier, very well said Xavier.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And while we're at it, just thank you to the, to the Board of Education for their ongoing support. This is a difficult time for everybody and you guys have been right here every step of the way.
You know, we want to do more, but not our job.
I wish we could help you with all that contact tracing thrown on you. I have cookies.
I'll take them.
Okay, so then I will take a motion to adjourn from our celebrity of the night.
Motion.
Are we going to adjourn to a session?
Motion into executive session?
Oh, motion into, yes, well, don't we have to adjourn this first?
You do, but you can do it together.
Just did that, oh, you want to do it together. Motion to adjourn the public session and to return to our executive session. That's from top and a second from Bill.
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.